We're ready to go.
We're ready.
Good evening, residents, staffs, fellow commissioners, and all the residents at home. Welcome to the Regular Planning Commission meeting of November 10. I'm sorry, November 24th, 2020, and we're starting at 7:04. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California. And as a result, on June 18, 2020, the California Department of Public Work issued guidance mandating that people in California wear cloth masks. So I see everyone's wearing cloth masks. And due to the ongoing COVID-19 emergency in pursuit to state and county public health directives, the City Council Chamber will have limited seating available on first-come, first-served basis. Public attending and participating in the planning commission meeting in person. All persons attending the meetings are required to wear cloth masks, be covering and observe social distancing protocols. A member of the public may also watch planning commission meeting live on web, City website. And if you're experiencing symptoms such as fevers, chills, cough, shortness of breath, or difficulty breathing, fatigue, or sore throat, the city requests that you participate in the meeting from home by watching the live via the link set forth. And remote public participant participations in lieu of attending the meeting in person, members of public can submit public comments via email or address the planning commission by telephone using the method described below, which is email to cityclerk@westcavina.org and/or also telephone accessibility, which is to call before 5:30 of the meeting, which is today. Then we have public comment addressing the commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission on any matter listed on the agenda or on any other matter within their jurisdiction is asked to complete a speaker card, which these, that is provided on the speaker podium, and submit the card to planning commission staff member. Please identify on the speaker card whether you are speaking on an agenda item or non-agenda item. Because to speak on non-agenda item will be heard during oral communication before public hearing sections of the agenda. Oral communications are limited to 30 minutes generally. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker unless further time is commanded by the chairperson. The chairperson may also at this, at his or her discretion for the limit the time of each speaker in order to accommodate a large number of speakers in order to ensure that the business of the planning commission is effectively conducted. So we're gonna have a moment of silence and a pledge allegiance and with oral communications. So I'm gonna read off the oral communications first, and then we're gonna have two non-public hearing meetings tonight, which is one is for we have a shopping center, which is almost three and a half acres. And the other one is a large sign, electronic sign. So we now have two public hearing meetings. So the oral communication, this is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission. Hold on, hold on. Just reading the oral communications first. Is the time when member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agenda items or calendar items. And others matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairpersons may impose reasonable limitation on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meetings. The Rock Brown Act limits the planning commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Those your comment may be agendized for a future meeting or be referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarifications if desired at this time. So we're gonna have a moment of silence and a pledge allegiance, and then we're gonna...
I might suggest, Madam Chair, a roll call as well.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Mark?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Holtz.
President.
Commissioner Hockes.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Redd Holtz.
Here.
And Commissioner Hing.
Here, thank you. Please join me with a moment of silence and then a pledge allegiance.
Please face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
Please, approval of minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minute on October, actually, November 10? No one has, seeing none, the minutes of November 10, 2020 are approved as submitted. And then we have oral communications. I don't think we have any cards for oral communication. And we can begin the public hearing, which is on item number two. The applicant is Jeff Tucker for Bentley Real Estate LLC. The applicant is requesting approval to construct three new single-story commercial building totaling 46,955 square foot on a 3.67 acre project site. The three new commercial buildings would include one 34,860 square foot retail space for the major tenant, one that is 7,595 square foot building that would house multi-tenant retail uses with five storefronts, and one that's 4,500 square foot restaurant with a 525 square foot patio and drive-through. And, I'm sorry, we will be hearing staff report meeting and then open to public hearing meeting. And testimony from, following by testimony from applicant, those in favor, then those opposed, and then we will have a rebuttal. So, who will be presenting this item, please? Renee or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. Tonight I will be presenting a collection of entitlements for a proposed new shopping center located at 2539 and 2505 East Garvey Avenue. Let's get started. Site features a 3.6 acre lot outlined in red before me. To the south, we have the 10 freeway. To the north, we have the Nissan dealer. To the west, we have both single-family homes and a Montessori school. To the east, we do have commercial buildings. More specifically, you may recognize the Wells Fargo Building across the street. And you also have the Eastland Center on its west wing where you have Sprouts and Planet Fitness and so on and so on. So, the proposed development requires a tentative parcel map to allow the merging of two individual parcels. One parcel, which is located at 2539 East Garvey Avenue, is 131 square feet, 131,000 square feet, and parcel two, located at 2505 East Garvey Avenue, is about 28,000 square feet. The merging of both parcels results in one parcel that measures approximately 160,000 square feet. The proposed development requires a precise plan for the site layout and architecture. The major tenant has requested approval for an administrative use permit to allow for the off-site sale of alcohol type 21. And you may notice that the staff report says type 47, so we just made that correction. The use of a drive-through requires a conditional use permit. At this time, the applicant has not provided a, has not provided planning staff a business operations plan for the prospective restaurant. The conditional use permit is also being requested for the height and area bonus for one freeway-oriented sign. And as part of the development, a tree removal permit is required when a tree or group of trees is representative of a significant period of a city's development. Current site conditions include one remaining dealership, more specifically, the Lotus Car Dealership. You guys may recognize it. The rest of the lot is vacant as of right now. Project site, as I mentioned, is about 160,000 square feet. 34,860 square feet will be dedicated to the major tenant. 7,595 square feet would be dedicated to five tenant retail spaces. And lastly, the 4,500 square foot commercial building for the drive-through and 525 outdoor square, 525 square foot outdoor patio. As you can see, the development meets all the required setbacks. And the major tenant, as you can see, I'll be pointing with the clicker, has a 15-foot setback to the single-family homes to the west and a five-foot setback to the north, which would be adjacent to the Nissan dealership. Then down below, five, five-foot setback to the school. And a 14-foot setback with eight inch to East Garvey Avenue on the front. And then the drive-through restaurant does have a 20-foot setback. Now, the two yellow stars indicate both pylon signs that are being requested through the conditional use permit. The yellow star with the red outline closest to Garvey Avenue on the south. That would be the freeway-oriented sign at 50 feet in height. And the yellow star with the blue outline is the freeway, is the other pylon sign at 40, 40 feet facing Citrus Street. That would be on the upper right of the screen. Trash enclosure is proposed to be located on the north part of the site, and that has the blue star. And then truck loading is located at the north side of the property, and truck deliveries will begin from the entrance off of Garvey on the south and will exit east of Garvey, east of Garvey, yes. Any impacts coming from deliveries will be buffered from adjacent residential uses. And then lastly, landscaping is being proposed to buffer between the commercial development and the residential properties to the west. Starting with the elevations, this is the main entrance for the major tenant. The proposed building is contemporary in style with a flat roof and provides a variety of articulation. Building surfaces, building heights range from 26 feet 8 inches to 36 feet 8 inches as measured from the finished grade to the highest point. Facade will include a variety of materials such as stonewood, felonic panels, emeco corrugated metal pre-weathered galva loom, metal rib spacings, and glazing mullions. I'm gonna be browsing through these, just showing you guys, and if you guys want me to go back, then just please let me know. This is an elevation view from East Garvey Avenue. And I would like to add that all rooftop equipment will be screened. This is the view from residential properties and the school. This is the view from the north or from Nissan, same perspective. And this is the elevation for the five tenants. And this is the front view that would be visible if standing from the center parking lot. This is a rendering of what the five inline tenant spaces would look like. Rendering for the major tenant. And as noted earlier before, the freeway-oriented sign will be 50 feet in height and located on the south side of the property. And the pylon sign facing Citrus Street is limited to 40 feet in height and a smaller square footage. Sequent document was prepared by Ringcon for the city, and I would like to clarify the ISMND is the city's document. During the comment period, we received two letters, one from the tribe and one from the water sanitation district. The response to the comment was prepared and has been distributed. And Greg Martin with Ringcon, city's environmental consultant, will be available a little later for any questions. Again, this is the entitlements being requested tonight. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the collection of entitlements listed before me. And there is an added condition. As you can see, the applicant shall defend, indemnify, and hold harmless to City of West Covina, its agents, its officers, and employees from any claim, action, or proceeding against the city or its agents, officers, or employees to attack, set aside, void, or null approval of this project. The applicant is present in the audience if the commission has any questions. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the, just for point of clarification, this is the building that's in the northwest corner of the property, correct?
Which, which building?
Yeah, the main building, the large one.
Yeah, it would be tucked into the northwestern area of the, of the site.
Rendering, you showed, that's not one individual. That's divided up like that one. That's different tenants that are in that building. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. And these would be closer to Garvey Avenue on the south end of the, of the property.
Okay. And one other question. The Lotus property or the Lotus building that's behind this building, is, I think it's still there, that has nothing to do with this project. Is that correct?
The Lotus dealership would be demolished as part of the construction to make way for the new development.
Will be part of the development?
Yes, it will be demolished, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Renee, I have a question, though. In back of the new building, will there be a street or is it just landscape? It seems like it's just landscape.
No, there's a street. Let me just show you really quick. This is, that's East Garvey Avenue. So...
Would be on the west side of the building, the west side of the new shopping center?
South, well, the street would be on the south side of the building and slowly going up, as it's going up north, it's going to the east side of the property.
You're right, the east side of the property. So on the east side of that property line, will there be an alley?
No.
It's just landscape 15 feet? The building is 15 feet, and then there will be just landscaping?
Yes.
Pull up that map again. Yeah, so on the east side, which is, actually, the west side?
West side, yeah. To the west side is where you have the residential properties.
Correct.
And the applicant is proposing the trees to, to create a buffer.
Okay, thank you.
So, that, that little school next door, the little preschool, is it still in operation?
I, I wanna say yes.
Yes? So with the liquor license going next door, is there a minimum amount of feet schools gotta be away? I thought it was like 300 feet.
I'm not entirely sure, but I can, we can find that information for you. I know we just previously, last planning commission, we did approve the sale of an alcohol license within schools, so...
Not me.
Well, we can, we can do further research.
I'm just asking because, you know, I have to think of the children. That's all. Thank you.
Understood.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify. For, for accessory off-site, off-sale uses, it does not require it to be within 300 feet away from a school?
The type 20 or type 21, because they're both basically the same. I think the type 21 is hard alcohol, and the type 20 is just beer and wine. So all, they're both off-sales. So the, the footage, so from point A to point B, that's, it doesn't exist anymore?
No.
Or for those two, only for the type, I think it's 47, 48? Because they're the other two of alcohol license? That's for bars and restaurants?
Um, we, we, there is no radius limitation for, for an accessory off-site use for a grocery store?
Oh, so that doesn't exist? Okay, thank you.
This alcohol is for the big shopping center, is that correct? A big retail?
It's for the grocery store, the proposed grocery store, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so will the...
We have a question.
Do we have any idea who the applicants are going to be? I'm not the applicants, the tenants are gonna be at this time?
No.
No?
The applicant has not released that.
Not released that?
Correct, that's what...
I can ask, I guess I can ask the applicant. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have questions for staff? If not, we're gonna be...
Go ahead.
You know, the buffer, the 15-foot buffer space on the west side between the homes, the school, and this development, was there, other than trees to, you know, to buffer between the two, is there also any other requirements to secure that space from entry?
A six-foot wall would be, a six-foot wall between the commercial property and the residential properties.
Okay, six-foot wall, but, but is there any other requirement for securing access to that space from either end?
Securing access? Could you, more specific on that?
Such as at the south or north ends of that buffer space?
I guess, will there be gates or anything to close that section off so kids don't go back there to do graffiti's, I'm assuming?
At this time, I don't believe that there is, there is a wall proposed in, in that area to, to close out, close off that section. However, the planning commission may, may require that as a condition of approval.
So currently, it's open to that 15-foot area. Will there be any doors actually having, from the shopping center?
We could make that as a condition of approval.
Yes, you can. And also, and also, the applicant may be able to address that, that question much further.
Thank you.
Okay, well, commissions, do I have any other questions for our staff? Then I'm gonna open up to public hearing meetings. We're gonna be hearing testimony from applicant, and those in favors, and then those opposed, and then we're gonna hear rebuttal from our applicant. Our applicant is?
Yes, sure.
Can you? Jeff Tucker, is he here?
Yep. Good evening.
Evening.
Are masks still required during testimony? Okay, I just, it's just, I'm gonna fog up if I don't. So I'm Jeff Tuck. I'm representing the applicant, which is Bentley Real Estate. And I hope maybe you'll revisit some of your questions that you just had, because I may be able to answer them a little bit better. I'd like to thank the commission for allowing us to come before you tonight with our project, which is located on the side of the old Mazda car dealership. I know when we first discussed the project's approval schedule, we were worried about having quorum tonight, so, prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, so thank you all for being here. And I'd like to thank Joanne and Renee for, and all the other staff members who have helped us and worked with us in order to meet the accelerated schedule necessary for this project to get before you tonight. They've, they've done a great job. And I also need to thank all of our team, especially our architects, McKentley-Malak, and the preparer of our environmental document, Ringcon Consultants, which I believe is on Zoom call. Haney Malak is here tonight to answer any questions if you need it. About four years ago, we came before you requesting approval to expand and remodel the automobile showroom at this site. At the time, we were working with a new car manufacturer, but eventually that deal fell apart. Subsequently, we were able to acquire the Lotus dealership property next door. This greatly helped planning any future development, we were, because we eliminated the L shape of the property. We tried several configurations for a retail shopping center, but nothing was solidified without the commitment of a major tenant. Fortunately, over, a little over a year ago, we entered into discussions with a new full-service grocery store to lease 35,000 square feet and become the center's major anchor tenant. We have signed a long-term lease with this tenant. The remaining pieces of the center then came into, into place. A 7,600-square-foot shop building, which will be divided amongst five smaller tenants and leased out individually to them. And a pad space for a 4,500-square-foot restroom, restaurant with a drive-through. Prior to the shutdown in March, we had an agreement with the tenant for the restaurant space. But things came to a halt, and that tenant has recently resurfaced and has expressed interest again. Hopefully, we can move forward with them because they would be a perfect fit for this. It is a, a quick service dine-in, and the drive-through is not a dominant part of their business. The pad space shown to you tonight on, on the plans is as a future use, and plans for this building will be, need to be submitted to you at that time. As you can see from the, from our plans, the center is designed to be oriented to the freeway and to Citrus Avenue. All the buildings back up to the adjoining residential properties to the west. No activities, deliveries, or otherwise, will take place behind the center. They are only there for emergency exit. All deliveries, all activities will be in the front. The rear area is required, setback is 15 feet. Because of the angle, the setback goes with the major tenant between 15 feet and 19 feet. The property line is angled from how the building sits. And we have a heavily landscaped area behind the building to act as a buffer. Landscaping is an important feature for the center. The site and parking lots will be heavily landscaped with trees, drought-tolerant plantings. Landscaping will take up 12% of the total site area, far beyond what's required by code. The entrance to the major tenant and the storefront of the shop building face to the east. All parking is provided on the east and south of the main buildings. There's parking for 199 cars. We have electric vehicle charging spaces and clean air parking spaces, as well as bicycle lockers for tenants and shoppers. As Renee said, the, the design of the building is contemporary in nature. It reflects the theme of the major tenant and their prototype design. It has clean lines, a modern composite materials and metal panels. The large glass storefront areas in the front will allow views into the interior and invite customers inside. Color palette is made up of shades of gray and white with bright green accents. Shop building will use similar materials and colors, so it looks like one homogeneous design. Also tonight, as Renee said, we're asking for approval of two pylon signs for the shopping center. And this is because there's two different orientations, one on Citrus and one on the freeway. The, the center's sign proposed in the northeast corner of the site would be visible to traffic on, on Citrus. And the second taller sign is located on the southern Garvey Avenue frontage, where it would be able to be seen from the freeway. We believe that the development of this previously underutilized site will be important to the city. It will eliminate an eyesore that has been prominent from the freeway for the past several years. I think it will be a, a project that will service the needs of the community and one that we can all be proud of for the years to come. As I've inferred at the beginning, this project requires an extremely accelerated schedule. We have concurrently submitted construction documents to the building department, planning, engineering, and fire departments for plan check and approval. Our schedule calls for obtaining a building permit by December 15th and delivery of a completed shell to the major tenant by April 5th, 2021. The shopping center is scheduled to open on November 15th, 2021. So as you can see, things are very tight on our schedule. So as you can see, things are very tight on our schedule. So thank you all for consideration tonight. I hope that you will see fit to approve our project, keep us on schedule, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Tuck. Nice to have you back in front of us with this project.
Yes.
So who's your tenant? I am bound by a non-disclosure agreement on who the name of the tenant is. Do you have a long-term lease with them?
I have a long-term lease with them.
As you know, the community's abuzz with curiosity about your tenant.
I am sure they are.
As are we.
Yes, yes. Let's just say, I think you'll be very happy.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm confident we will. That, that you're driving, the, the main focus of the main tenant, matter of fact, both tenants, is, is, as someone's on the 10 freeway and they're driving towards LA, they're gonna see that east elevation.
Absolutely.
That's the main, that's really gonna be an eye catcher.
Absolutely. I mean, because of the terrain and the, and the heights of the site above the freeway, it may be difficult to see the entrance to the buildings, but you'll certainly be able to see the facade. You'll certainly be able to see the sign that will be placed along the south side of Garvey.
And on the two signs, what are you? It looks like it's divided up two or three different ways. You're just gonna have the name of the, you're gonna have like five, six tenants, or seven with the food.
I, I believe we are only going to have signs, space for the major tenant at the top. The pad space is the second one. And the third one, probably the end cap on the south side of the shop building. The other smaller tenants will not get signage.
Right, okay. And are those the five doors, are they all, they all look like they're pretty much the same square footage?
They're similar in size, yes.
So there is no one, is the one on the end cap gonna be more dominant?
No, just by the, its nature on the end. It probably will command a little bit higher rental rate and prominence.
Because the elevations got a little more emphasis to it, it looks.
Yes, it sticks out, and it's, it's, it's a little bit higher, yes.
I think that's all I have right now.
Mr. Tuck, would you like to divulge what the name of the restaurant is?
Well, right now, we don't have anything firm. We have had, we've had discussions with Panera.
You don't have any lease signed with?
We do not have a lease at this point. That's why it's, it's just a future use right now.
Okay, I might, I'm sure you've done a traffic study, or I hope you did, because I will tell you, traffic going east and west on Garvey Avenue North is horrendous right now because of the traffic light at the very end. And I'm just wondering what this is gonna do, especially when you have a driveway that's going right into the drive-through of the restaurant. It could block up on Garvey Avenue. Have you looked into that?
We have done a, a full traffic study as part of the environmental report.
Thank you. I like it.
Thank you.
No questions, but I like it too.
Actually, can we go back to the sign? There are two signs that you're requesting. For, now, is the one on the right closer to the freeway?
Well, actually, when this was submitted, we figured we would have two signs of each 50 feet. That was what, what our original proposal was, would be for. In talking with staff, staff asked us to reduce the sign that would be in the north, east, east corner of the site to 40 feet. And then to, it would allow us to then take the freeway bonus and make the sign on the south facing the freeway at 50 feet. So one would be 40, one would be 50.
I don't see the dimension of how wide it is. I know that the height of it is 50 and 40. What's the width of it?
Of the sign?
Close to the freeway? And also the signage, like the tenant A, tenant B, tenant... One, two, three, I think?
I mean, I, I would guess it's probably no more than eight or 10 feet high, I mean, eight to 10 feet wide. Eight to 10 feet wide?
Eight to 10 feet wide, okay.
They have a dimension on there that says the panels are four feet high, so if they're four feet high and you turn it sideways, it looks like...
And how?
Eight or 10 feet.
What's the depth of the sign?
The depth of the sign?
We don't have those dimensions.
It might be 18 inches to two feet.
Not the signage itself, but the whole big, the structure, the 50-feet structure, so it's only two feet wide?
That appears to be what we're showing.
We don't know. Can a structure be 50 feet tall, only two feet wide? So I was wondering if you can, and then what about the skinnier one to the right? Because the one at the left, I, I believe the left sign is, is closer to the freeway on Garvey?
One is the front elevation of the sign, the other one is the side elevation of the sign.
Okay, so you don't have an elevator, you don't have any pictures or what have you of the other sign that is 40 feet tall?
As I said, we were, we were going to put up the same sign in two different locations. Now we're putting up the same sign, except one will be shorter than the other.
Can I ask, since it's in the north, I guess it's on Garvey and forgot what the other street is. Well, yeah, Citrus and, what was the other street?
It's Garvey.
It's Garvey.
Well, Garvey's along, along the freeway.
Frontage is entirely on Garvey.
Everything's on Garvey.
Both sign?
Garvey is the entire frontage of, of the property.
I just, I'm just...
When you go down the, the street as a snake.
Yeah, it curves, it curves around, but it, so it appears to be, to be like on more on, on Citrus as well. So you're right, it, it did, it's curving around Garvey. But at the same time, one sign seems to be catering towards Citrus, is that correct?
That's correct.
Since that area and people are driving, why 40 feet? Why 40 feet tall? The sign aren't more toward the Citrus side?
Well, I, I, I think it would allow it to be seen from Citrus, people coming, driving north on Citrus. It, it could be seen from there. Would allow them to know that that's, they have to turn on Garvey in order to go in there. I, I believe it's probably consistent with the signage for Nissan next door. 60 feet.
I have a question, Mr. Tuck. So the sign that you have is, is, I know it's gonna be seen from the freeway, is it big enough? You know, do you think you'd like to make it bigger? I mean, I mean, if I owned a business and somebody come down freeway, I want, I would want them to see my business. I, I just think it's, I, I would like to see it bigger, actually.
I guess there's always two schools of thought on that.
Well, okay.
There's the architectural school of thought that less is more, so I, you know. I, I think it's fine, the, the sign is what we have proposed.
No problem.
Chair, if I may, respond to the 40-feet height question. The freeway bonus is only allowed for one sign. So they are utilizing the freeway bonus for the freeway-oriented sign that's 50 feet tall. The code limits pylon signs that are not, that are not freeway, that, that does not include the freeway bonus to 40 feet, so.
So for that, let's say if it's not allowed, because it's only allowed one sign. That is, I think you get the bonus of 75% in heights when it's closest to the freeway, 300 feet or something from the freeway, is that correct? So you were allowed an increased height of 75% more. I guess the question comes in is, if it's not, then what would the sign heights be instead of 48 feet? What's the normal signage?
Without, I'd have to, I'd have to check the code. I didn't, I didn't verify the code with, with the normal signage, because that was not being proposed. But I, but I'd have to refer to it and get back to you regarding that.
And also, I like also to see if it's possible from the, because you had a beautiful, you can say, rendering of the building, rendering of the frontage of the building. But I like to see in respect to the signage and the building, like what is, what does that look like from the building perspective as well? It seems pretty, to me, it seems really tall for that size of a shopping center and at the inner corner, instead of like, you know, further out. So I like to see that as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that this is a freeway frontage piece of property which has an allowable 50-foot sign height?
With, with the freeway bonus, you, you're allowed to have a 50-foot sign, yes. But that, but that is under the, the planning commission's discretion for approval. And that's, that's why the CUP is part of this application.
Also, help me clarify this, Joanne. So with the frontage, because this is freeway frontage, it's kind of curved around the freeway, the Garvey and your, your site. I understand that it, it is a freeway frontage, and you do get that 75 side, 75% bonus in height increase of the signage. But my question is, the second sign that you're asking for, that would be an extra sign, because it's only allowed one sign, is that correct?
That's why we've applied for a conditional use permit.
Okay, so only one sign is allowed for the freeway bonus sign? Yes, but they, they're allowed to have the second, a second sign oriented towards Citrus. So the, the sign that's oriented towards Citrus and Garvey, that is not allowed a freeway bonus, because they're using, utilizing that for the, for the freeway-oriented sign?
So I guess my question is, if it's not allowed for free, for the bonus, how high would that be at the normal, what the existing code allowed?
I'm in the process of looking that information up for you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, I guess while Joanne's looking forward, we can hear from Haney Malak.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Haney Malak, McEntee-Malak Architects. Presenting the, the project with, with Mr. Tuck. And so I'm, I have a question which you may have as you, as you examine the project. I think, I think Jeff has done a fantastic job for presenting the project and just kind of outlining what, what it is, the proposal that we have in front of us. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Can you kind of tell us your theory of, of your design for this project? You know, what is the genesis of your architecture?
Well, we wanted to do something that's, that's more modern and, and kind of timeless, if you will, rather than, than approaching the project with a, with a, with a typology of architecture. So having, having an opportunity that, that basically kind of explores new materials and, and yet keeps, keeps a more modern approach to the project. So that's why the use of the, the stonewood materials, the, the metal materials is a lot, you know, mixed together with the, with the stucco. It's, it's, it's timeless, it's classic, it's, it has, it does not, it does not age over time, and that's, that's, that's the approach that we wanted to take with this project.
It's kind of a minimalist approach, right? I think it's not gaudy at all, it's very, very subtle. Thank you, that's my only question.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor that'd like to come up and speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Andrew McIntyre, president of the McIntyre Company, who happens to own the property pretty close to north of the property, the Grove, where the Buffalo Wild Wings is, and also southeast corner where the McIntyre Square is, and our new 2640 office building. We are totally for this project. We have been waiting for a long time for something to happen on this corner. Of course, like they said earlier, this has been a blighted area for the city. As a resident of the city, you know, we have a beautiful new shopping center, you know, where Sprouts is, where we did ours, our two projects. There's this thing that's just sitting there. And the presentation of this and their new tenants and creating a retail little haven, as you might say it, on Citrus, right off the 10 freeway, is it gonna be a huge asset to the community? To give you guys a little perspective on the size of the sign that they're requesting, McIntyre Square sign, where it's on Citrus, is 40 feet. So if you want to understand how big that sign is, kind of create some synergy there. So that way, I'm sure staff probably looked at some similar-sized signs in that area, and that gives you an idea. On the other side of the freeway, just to the south, that those signs are 45 feet. So I'm sure the architects, they, they're aware of the fact that it's a perfect visual for tenants. I would have said to maybe make them a little bit larger to capture that freeway audience, because Citrus is a major off-ramp. And God knows, right now, every city business needs all the help they can get from, you know, just being able to sell stuff. And just, again, this is a beautiful project, I can't wait to see it. And they're doing a beautiful project up in Covina right now, two of them, that if you go up there on Citrus, and I think it's right across the street from like Domestic Barbecue in downtown, they're doing beautiful stuff up there. So I hope you guys approve this, and I hope the city gets a new beautiful market and some restaurants and some other stuff over there, and we're all gonna benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Hang.
Can you help us fill us a card as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to expand or correct a little bit, I'm a sign professional, I work with McIntyre. And it's actually the Citrus Grove that's at 40 feet, because it's on the north side, and McIntyre Square is 45. That's where he's talking about the synergy of sightline. And also, you had asked about the depth of the signs they're proposing. That's typically, in the design phase, isn't established, because it has to be engineered for wind load and soil conditions, which affects the size of the pipe, and the size of the cladding is then, you know, around the size of the pipe. So they wouldn't actually know a depth prior to having the engineering done, so it's just a design phase thing. So just want to answer your depth question.
Thank you, while you're at it. So how wide, so how wide is this sign? Because for some reason, it's not on our plan right now.
So something like this, typically, that pole cover, which would be the green, you're looking at about a three-foot depth, because typically, with something at a height of 40 to 45 feet, you're looking at about a 24-inch diameter pole. So when you clad it, it has to be rectangular around it, so you're expanding on that 24 inches. So you're really getting closer to 30 to 36 inches in depth.
So about three, three feet, potentially four feet, depth-wise?
I would say for the heights they're proposing, three feet would be adequate.
Three feet, okay. And then the width of this one would be about 10 feet or 15 feet on top?
On top? Oh, no, it's less than that. The column is only eight feet wide, so the top of the crown would maybe be 10 or 12. So you're looking at six to eight in the column and maybe 10 to 12 in the crown.
But then adding the sign to it, that would be the width of it, it's eight, eight, 10 feet, which is...
Entire width of that sign, from the left side of the column to the right side of the Buffalo Wild Wings, is approximately 22 feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we can get a little perspective. Anyone else have any questions? Anyone that, okay, so those in favor, anyone else? Those opposed would like to come up? Not, then we're gonna close the public hearing meeting, and we're gonna have open commission discussions.
Chair, if I may answer the question.
Go ahead, thank you.
That you asked. Okay, based on, based on the size of the property and also the location, by right, they are allowed a 40-foot tall sign. That, that's through a sign administrative review process.
But one sign, is that correct?
Well, it says one per business. Well, it says one per business. So there's multiple businesses on, on the site. So, I mean...
So you're saying that they had 10 businesses, so you could just line them all up and then have two signs?
No, no. So we are, they, they are, they are going to be allowed two, two signs. One freeway oriented sign and one, one, one smaller pylon sign locate, oriented towards Citrus Street and also, and also Garvey Avenue. So it's, again, it's, this is a, this is a public hearing entitlement. It's up to the planning commission on what you would like to approve.
Thank you. Hey, anyone want to go first?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to start this discussion off. I'm also happy that Mr. Tuck has brought us a project that we can wrap our arms around. This, to me, you know, if you look back at the freeway corridor, you know, the Eastland Center, the Citrus, Garvey, and all of that 10, 15 years ago, it was a sewer. It was really going south in a hurry. And over the last few years, beginning with the revitalization of Eastland, continuing with the, the Grove and, and the square that the McIntyre Company's put in, now you have what I'm considering a renaissance of that area that is really becoming the place to be. And now, when you replace that blighted building, which sat there as an eyesore for way too many years, being used as really a billboard and auto storage for all this time, now what is being proposed is, is beautiful. I think it's going to be quite an asset in addition to the city. And, you know, especially, you know, the thing that West Covina has going for it that other cities don't is the freeway frontage. This is a freeway city. And, you know, especially with, when times are tough like this, we want to be able to capture as many of the hundreds of thousands of vehicles that traverse that freeway as we can. You know, Covina can't do it. Other cities that are landlocked can't do it. West Covina can do it. We are very lucky to be able to do that. And I think we have to do what we can to capture it. You know, I, I get a little concerned when applicants come in front of us and those applicants are in compliance with our code. They are following our code and they are, you know, kind of taken to task for that. If an applicant comes in front of us and they are within, they're meeting our code, I think we're, we're walking a slippery slope when we start to question that. So I, you know, I'm a believer in, in signs. And I'm a believer in taking advantage of the freeway corridor to attract businesses and customers to those businesses. So, you know, I am happy to support this project. I'm, I'm kind of happy to see it's on a fast track. We know it's not going to sit there, you know, dormant. You know, I'm confident that Mr. Tuck and Bentley Realty have the resources to carry this through and finish it and deliver a quality product to the city and to the residents. And not only to the residents, but the people that are driving that freeway that are going to pull off and pull into that parking lot. You know, at least we got a little something out of Mr. Tuck when he kind of whispered Panera Bread. So, you know, thank you, sir, for that. You know, when I first looked at that, I thought maybe it might be a Raising Canes. But then I looked at the drive-through queue was only 10 cars. And that ain't going to work for a Raising Kane. And it's 4,500 square feet and a Raising Kane, I looked up, is only like about 2,700. That ain't going to work. So Panera Bread would be ideal. I agree with you. The synergy with the other, you know, major tenant that we're all guessing at, I think will, will be good. And I'm looking forward to this thing. And I can't wait to see it go up. I can't wait to see it lit up at night as freeway, as cars go by there and just look at that beautiful new center in the city of West Covina. So thank you, and I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, I've looked at that lot for so long that it was just a disgrace to the city. I mean, when you're coming through there, that's the first thing you see. I can remember when it was a Mercury dealership, and they didn't keep it up too well. And then I, I can remember when Penske Jaguar crossed the freeway were doing so well in sales when they had both Mercedes and Jaguar there. Mr. Penske wanted to move over to that, that location, but it took some major changes. And they weren't willing, the, the property weren't willing to do that. So he just walked away from it. And then it sat there. And then it was a storage lot for cars. And that's what the first thing you saw is a storage lot for, for cars. And it was terrible. It was a disgrace. And everything around there was being built up. And this was just sitting there, you know? And it, and it was really terrible. So I'm finally glad to see somebody's going in there, because I think it's a, it's a great, great site, great project site. And I just never could figure out why nobody was going to go in there and grab that thing, especially with the, the visual you, you get from the, from the freeway. This looks like a really good project to me, even though they won't share who the, who the major tenant is. But whoever it is, I think they're going to have a quality product, a quality location. And I think it's great to have a little drive-through fast food location there. So I'm all for it. I, I think it's going to be great. It's going to be in addition to our city. So God bless and good luck.
Yeah, I think it's an outstanding project. Don, I also remember when it was Narducci, Lincoln Mercury, and then it was a Mazda dealer. That was back in the seventies. Yeah, I want to say thank you. It's an outstanding project. And I wish you the best of luck.
Yeah, I guess I can't really say anymore than what my fellow commissioners already said so far as, as far as it being an outstanding project and really happy that it's coming in. But the only thing that might concern me is that the freeway oriented sign, this is at least from what I've seen so far, doesn't appear to be even big enough to capture attention from motorists on the freeway. It seems like such kind of a small sign. But if that's going to serve your needs, you know, then, you know, so be it. But seems to me it would be, there's room for a larger sign oriented toward the freeway.
Okay, well, don't get me wrong. I do love the project. I mean, it's a beautiful project. Like I said, and like my fellow commissioner had said, it's been years, 20, 30 years that, that I feel like that area has not been moving around until, not only that location, also the south side, just basically to the Citrus corner on the freeway. Now that a new project came along, I mean, it's wonderful and it's great. However, I am having a lot of concern regarding the gigantic signs that is coming up along our freeway. I mean, if you drive along, even the, I forgot where the Angel Freeway is at, I think the 57 freeway, I mean, they have thousands of acres. And they have a tiny little sign just basically represent, okay, that is the stadium right there. So it is very concerning to me as a resident, also as commissioner in West Covina, if we have a long strip of, of freeway, that we have businesses along the freeway and we're having all these gigantic sign that potentially may be blocking our city view, our, the residents' view. I mean, don't get me wrong. I want to do everything that I can to help all the businesses that are here. But a sign should not dictate your business, how you run your business, the flagship of your businesses, and, and even the location where you're at. As time goes by, all the residents will eventually know, okay, this is where a to-go place. If you have, you know, you take care of the plaza and, and all the businesses are there. And of course, residents will love to go, just like, just like I believe across the streets, the McIntyre Square. It was pretty quiet for 20, 30 years until he came along. And now it's really, you know, busy with shoppers and all that over there. So I don't think by having a gigantic sign blocking all the view, whether it's coming from the freeway or what have you, will basically entice people to stop by. I mean, I don't really believe that. As a business, just like West Covina, we have all those dealerships. Anyone who lives around that area would know, okay, if you want to go get car, you go to Exodus Uzah, and then you get all the car that you want. Quite a few dealerships around that area. So same as any other shopping centers, whether it's Eastland Shopping Center, whether it's the mall, it shouldn't dictate how, just because there's a big old gigantic sign, it's going to bring in business. I truly don't believe that. And I think as businesses grow, and it has a few years to it or so, and members will go. Just like if I were to drive to Hollywood and if I drive across it, it doesn't mean that I'm going to stop by because I saw a gigantic big sign right there. So I would go to shop where I think, like if there's a Panera and I'm going to eat Panera, I would know where it is if I live in the area. So that's, basically, that's my thought on it. And it's really concerning. And, and also entitlement is not because you want it, you get it. That's why we're all here. And also, businesses, whether it's businesses or commissioners, we're here to dictate and, and not, not so much to, you know, to actually approve a code that's not allowed by title. That's why you need to use, or that's why you need to get a conditional use permit. I understand that we do want to help of any businesses that comes through. However, at the same time, we also need to look at the future of all the signage on the freeway and also all the businesses. Can you imagine if every business along our freeway have a 50, 60-foot signs? At the end of the day, that might as well have the whole, Coach Run just built us a nice beautiful wall and put all the sign over there and just line them all up. In fact, just put it up, just imagine, you know, 40, 50 feet and just tunnel through our, our West Covina. Is that how I want our cities to look like 10, 15, 20 years from now? That's not how I want to look like. I wanted someone to come by, drive across the freeway, see some beautiful shopping center, just like how it is, and, and see some signage on the store, on, on the storefront itself and say, you know, this is where I want to stop by. This is the beautiful place. Not being blocked by all the signs. And I hope some of the future businesses or even today's businesses would look at that and say, look, I like to see, you know, my city or our city and all the businesses and entice people to come in a different way. So that's, you know, it's very concerning if, and also for our commissioner as well. So we also need to think about that. If everyone comes through and every, every week, everyone comes through and asks for a 50, 60, 100-foot sign, what is West Covina going to look like along the freeway? So that's something that I, I am deeply concerned about all the signs I approve. I mean, okay, the mall is one issue. They had hundreds of acres. And I was not really comfortable a few years back when I approved that. I understand also the car dealership had lots of acreage to their, to their, to their businesses. So when they asked for one sign, you know, even that was difficult for me to approve, because if you drive along even Irvine, Glendale, Pasadena, do you see all that signage along the freeway? I drove by quite often to those, you know, I don't see all these signs. And it's West Covina, it's going to be like, how is it going to be like in the future? That's all I wanted to say. And does anyone else want to add anything else?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve. If I can have the resolution numbers read, please.
Anyone second for that?
I second it.
Okay, the resolution number is 20-6050 for the tentative parcel map, 20-6051 for the precise plan, and 20-6052 for the conditional use permit, and 20-6053 for the administrative use permit.
That's my motion to approve all those.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. So to reiterate, we have a motion by Commissioner Redholtz, a second by Commissioner Holtz. And with that, I will take the roll call. Vice Chair Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
And Chair Hang?
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
I'm sorry. And also 20-6054 for the mitigated negative declaration. Thanks for reminding.
Is there a separate motion for that?
I, I think if the first and the maker and the second agree, then...
Is that that?
Yeah, that can be added.
No problem.
So again, the, the project is approved and the motion passes 4-0, or 4-1, excuse me.
And for the record, there's no objections from any of the other commissioners that that is included in the motion. Correct?
Approval of, I think what the city attorney is suggesting is that the two other commissioners should also concur with approval.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck. Congratulations. We're looking forward to the project.
Good luck. Hurry up. Get it in.
Moving on to public hearing item number three. Applicant is McIntyre Company. And this is, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a 60-tall, 60-foot-tall electronic reader board oriented towards the freeway. Project site is within 300 feet of freeway center line. The proposed electronic reader board would have 672 square foot of sign, sign area. The CUP for the freeway bonus will only allow an electronic reader board with 394 square foot of sign area. Therefore, the applicant is requesting that planning commission consider initiating a code amendment to allow commercial property that are directly abutting the freeways to have an electronic border with at least 672 square feet in sign area. And who will be presenting? Joanne, will you be presenting?
I will be presenting this item, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Hang and also members of the planning commission. The item, the project before you is located on, that item before you is a, is a 20,003, 20,038 square foot lot improved with a 10,712 square foot office building located on the office professional zone. The site is located west of the 10 East freeway on-ramp. North, to the north of the site is, is the 10 Interstate 10 freeway. To the south of the site is a shopping center, namely McIntyre Square, and also the public storage facility. This, this site is configured unique in a way that it is located directly adjacent to the freeway. And it also is, it is also greater than 500 feet from the nearest residential property on, on Citrus Street. I'll go ahead and go over the, the location of the proposed sign. If, if you look at the projector at this moment, partial site plan is on the projector. The proposed, well... The proposed, well, the existing building is located in this area where the arrow is pointed. And then if you look at the pinkish purple path, that is the existing walkway that was recently improved on the site. So that is this walkway right along here. The pole will be, is proposed to be located in this area right along here, which I believe is, if you're looking at the photograph of the building, it would be around this area. Right along here where the arrow is pointed. The proposed sign is a double face sign with a single hole for the pylon. So on the projector right now is the elevation of the proposed sign. What's being proposed, what the applicant is proposing is a 672 square foot electronic reader board with the sign being up to 60 feet in height. As proposed, the sign is not allowed by the zoning code. What is allowed through the conditional use permit by a zoning code, the zoning code is a 394 square foot reader board sign area. The 60 foot height is allowed with the freeway bonus and no off-site advertisement is allowed or proposed at this time. The purpose of the signage is to advertise only for onsite services. The applicant is also requesting a code amendment initiation to revise the West Covina municipal code to allow properties directly abutting the freeway to have a larger sign. So again, the signage that the applicant has proposed is not allowed at 672 square feet. What is allowed is a reduced size of 394 square feet with the freeway bonus. So I kind of eyeballed what 394 square feet would look like if the sign was reduced. So the red outline would basically show if it was approximately, if the height of the reader board is approximately 12 feet height and the width of the reader board is reduced so that it's no more than 394 square feet. And on the right-hand side, I'm showing something that's similar except that if the height of the reader board was to stay at 14 feet and the sign is reduced to 394 square feet. So this is approximately what that sign would look like.
What's the black area that you're showing up there?
Oh, right here? This is, sorry. This whole black area right here is what the proposed sign as is submitted by the applicant would look like. So this is a rendering of that reader board sign from the freeway.
Go back to your other slide.
So this this is the whole proposed reader board sign.
The blue is just the reader portion?
Yeah, the blue with the red outline is just showing how much the sign would be reduced in order for it to comply with code through the CUP process.
Basically, I think they wanted the whole thing, which is the blue and the black. That's how big they wanted, but the code only allowed it supposedly only the blue section.
And also to reiterate what I mentioned earlier on the other project, the CUP process is an entitlement process and it's subject to planning commission approval. So this is something that the planning commission would have to accept, the 394 square feet reader board sign as well, if the planning commission wishes to approve the conditional use permit. And the planning commission's options are regarding the conditional use permit is to approve the conditional use permit as conditioned, which is approve the smaller 394 square feet electronic reader board, or deny the conditional use permit, or provide an alternative direction. As far as the requested code amendment initiation is concerned, if the planning commission chooses to initiate the code amendment, staff will draft the ordinance. Once the ordinance is drafted, staff will go ahead and schedule the item for a planning commission consideration in the public hearing. And if the planning commission approves the draft ordinance and recommends that the city council approve it, it'll get scheduled for city council consideration. The planning commission also has the option to take no action in the proposed code amendment initiation.
Thank you, Joanne.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit application and allow a 60 foot tall sign that's with the reduced 394 square foot electronic reader board to be used for advertisement for services offered on the premises. In addition, planning commission may initiate a code amendment to consider allowing freeway adjacent properties to have a larger electronic reader board. I would like to add that this item was, this item has been notified as a public hearing to all owners and occupants within 300 feet away from the subject site. We had sent notices to 200 owners and occupants and also published a public hearing notice in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune. As to date, staff did receive five emails in opposition of the proposed sign. And staff provided the planning commission a printout of all five emails in front of you prior to the meeting. With this, staff concludes the staff report. If the planning commission has any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you, Joanne. Joanne, can you? Thank you. That's the pictures I want to pull up. Okay, anyone wants to? Go ahead.
Well, I just, you know, this is a little bit unusual, so I just maybe kind of clarified a little bit. We're, I don't think I've ever seen it, we're being asked to approve an item that is outside, that's not allowed by code and at the same time, we're initiating an ordinance to make it legal to approve the sign that they've applied for. So maybe we can get a
So for clarification, while the applicant originally requested the larger board, staff's recommendation is to approve it consistent with the current code, which is only the 394. That said, the applicant still wants the larger size so that they've also requested that you consider expanding it in the future. And I believe that they are building the base of the sign so that if this commission and the council eventually does expand, they could then expand the screen size.
So they're building it so it's adaptable to the larger reader board, it sounds like. Okay. Now, on the code for the larger sign, it's, looks like it's strictly limited to properties that directly abut the freeway, correct?
That's what's being proposed. And it's also up to the planning commission on what the planning commission would like to include as far as language in the code amendment.
And do we know how many properties directly abut the freeway that might?
I didn't count on how many properties that are directly abut the freeway. However, there are only probably like a handful of properties that are directly abutting the freeway and also 500 feet from any single-family residential property similar to the site.
So it's a pretty limited number?
Yes.
Most likely, okay. And one last one. What is allowed to be advertised on that board is only businesses that are in that particular building. In other words, you couldn't advertise what's across the street in the square? It would have to be in the building only.
Currently, the sign code does not allow off-premises advertisements. So only on-premise advertisement is allowed. So they can only advertise for what's on that particular site. It's an office building, so whatever office services they have.
It's in that building, okay. Is that something that the planning commission could look at?
No, it would have to be done through a separate code amendment.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
So they couldn't put on their office space available? It has to be an existing resident in the building, is that correct?
If it's an office building, so if there are any office spaces that are not being leased, then they can put that up there.
They do what?
Can.
They can.
They can.
It would be allowed to.
Okay, good.
Thank you. So we're going to be opening up to, anyone else has a question? If not, we're going to be opening up to public hearing meeting. We'll be hearing testimony from the applicant, those in favor, and then those opposed, and then a rebuttal. So any applicant, please come up. Andy?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Andy McIntyre again from the McIntyre Company. To give you a little history here on this whole, this sign, this site, and the whole kind of area. We acquired McIntyre Square across the street when the center was in dire repair of improvements. Somewhere around 2008, eight or nine. And we, you know, started the improvements of that center in the middle of the recession and God bless it, we signed some amazing tenants, some that haven't made it, some that have. That's just the nature of the beast here with retail centers, especially retail in the modern era. And, you know, we always looked at that office building as, you know, right in front of our face of our shopping center. And that was always, you know, kind of an eyesore to me and my family about the way people, you know, they would look at our shopping center and they would see that office building. And that office building, you know, I've improved and I've done enough projects to know that people forget real quickly about the shape of what things were in prior to the improvements that occurred to them. And they think that's the way they always were. And that office building a year ago was, for lack of a better term, disgusting. It was an elevator that didn't work, a garage door that didn't work underneath, sewers that were backed up improperly connected, air conditioning units, six of 18 were working, ADA issues, they had a back door, an emergency back door that led to stairs. I mean, that whole thing was a disaster. The original developer of it spent a lot of money on the design, but boy, did they have a lot of deferred maintenance. So one day, right after a Friday, when I was leaving the Hearst Ranch, I got in the car, I drive, I saw a little tiny for sale sign on it and it was finally, boom, our target to be able to improve that property, to leave an impression on any visitor that's not from here that leaves on that Citrus exit that that is a first-class office building and this is a first-class city. And 10 years ago, when you had gotten on that freeway at that little area, if you weren't from here, you didn't have a very good impression of our city. But now, especially after the last applicant, when you get on the freeway over there, everybody knows, because we've lived here, how good of a little city we have right over there, that neighborhood. And this sign is going to help us get that building full, advertise for our city. Of course, we're going to be able to put on there all of our public service announcements. We just had a wonderful event up at the Field of Valor on Grand where we raised over $100,000 a year for veterans. We're going to be able to put stuff like that up there to advertise to all the people that come through this area that have no idea of the great events we do. Rotary, Lions Club, city events, all those things. On top of that, we're going to be able to attract first-class office tenants in that office building and be able to advertise something that no one else has, which is a beautiful sign as you get, as you come through the city, first class, first quality, new technology. The sign, the 14 by 48, the reason why we came up with that is because that's a standard size reader board sign. The sign is going to cost roughly, right, we're prepared to spend a million dollars on it. The screens are $500,000 and then the rest of it, we're going to dress up because we don't want a typical, I'm not even going to say the B word. I'm just going to say we do not want a typical sign that you see on the freeway. Nothing about McIntyre is typical. And we do not believe we're going to be delivering a typical reader board sign. This sign, as you can see, if you go back and you see, we oriented it towards the freeway. This site is so unique to the city. First off, I don't think they would ever let you build on this site again because there is no public access. There is no crosswalk, there is no sidewalk. There is, I don't even know how the original builders, this wasn't even built that long ago. This was built in 1991, but this is a very unique site. And if you see how we position that sign where it sits just above the building, because we don't want it to be some gaudy thing, we want it to fit. So as you're driving eastbound, it looks like that sign is sitting directly on top of that building. And that picture on the left is if you're standing on the bridge of the freeway. That's while it was under construction. God bless you, Drew, for walking out there and taking that picture on the left. And the one on the right is if you're like on that on ramp. That's like if you're right up on it. But the other one, as you can see, sits right up in there and it doesn't block any of the sky. What it does block is a part of forest lawn, which I think we all want to put out of our minds until we last have to. That's the mausoleum up there on the right. And so it doesn't really do much visual to certain people damage. And yet it is going to be able to help us as a city advertise and that office building and that shopping center, because if one of those tenants on the other side wants to come over and rent space, it's going to help us. And I've heard, you know, I always say this, you don't go from zero to Tiffany's. That shopping center was a zero when we started. And so we have taken it to one level and we want to take the whole area to another level. We want to have all those exciting tenants and restaurants and cool spots to go to at night right down the street from us. And just the general feel, I'm not saying they're going to advertise on the site, I'm just going to talk about the general feel of the area. As we build quality things, it leads everybody to think this is a great area. That shopping center that they just built, that is a wonderful addition. And it's, the public, retailers, they like lemmings. Once they start seeing stuff happen, they just want to follow it. So we've been able to continue. We started with the Grove, then the Square, then we got Sprouts, then we got this. And this is the type of momentum on Citrus that we've been able to keep going for a long time. Anybody who followed downtown Pasadena knows that it was horrible 30 years ago. And then we had a run and then, that's why I always use the zero to Tiffany's. Now they got a Tiffany's sitting in the middle of downtown Pasadena. If you said that 30 years ago, they'd be like, you're out of your mind. And so we just want to continue to add value, assets, quality projects. And in our experience, signage is very important. signage is very important. People want to pay, I immediately got a note, got a phone call from a tenant in the building across the way that said, I would love to come over to your building if you get disapproved. He's one of my Rotarians. He heard it, he saw it, he got it in the 100 citrus building, and he's immediately saying, that's, that's a wonderful addition. So it's that type of momentum and quality projects and stuff like that that we've been bringing, and we hopefully urge you to, or please approve this project tonight. And if you have any more questions, Drew's here, he's our engineer of all of our signs, he's done McIntyre Square, he's done the Grove, did a bunch of stuff for us, for us in downtown Covina. He, he can answer. I mean, we have highly sensitivities to height, I don't want things to look gaudy, I want things to look classy. And so he's helped us along the years develop a great sign program for the Square and the Grove, so if you have any questions about the technicalities of the sign, he's here to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, have you, have you considered putting the sign on top of the building?
It's the structural integrity of the building would, it's rather difficult. Ever.
I have a question. If you wouldn't mind, mind sharing, how much you entered that building for?
So, no, I don't. It's, we purchased the building for 2.6 million. We put $700,000 into the improvements of it, put torazo floors in there, I guarantee you, not very many buildings, maybe City Hall, because only governments really use torazo, the schools. But we did all the brick, we did all the ADA access, air conditioning, elevators, underground parking. I really urge anybody to please go in there. We still have a couple little architectural, we got some awnings we got to put on it, cleaned up the lighting, but we're in it for right now, somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.3 million dollars, and then this will be another million dollars.
How many tenants are you expecting to be in that particular buildings?
Currently, right now, I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 tenants in there.
Four of 12 tenants?
Yeah, I mean, depending on if somebody takes multiple, we have 12 addresses.
Okay, thank you.
1,200 square foot tenants, 1,000 square foot tenants, it's about, some are 800, some are 1,600, it's a really weird shaped building.
So potentially 12 addresses and 12 tenant, max?
So, I, I, in today's world of office space, where you have these little offices that you rent, I mean, if you ask Boranka Tower, they got Regis in there, and they got floors where they have, everybody takes a little office. We have parking restrictions, although we have the Square across the street to limit that, but tech, I mean, you're asking me a technical question, so technically, we have 12 addresses, so 12 tenants. Do I expect 12, I hope we get one. I want somebody to take the whole building.
I understand.
In a perfect world.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor, come up and talk?
I'm Drew Salome from Eagle Signs, like Andy referenced, and I just wanted to add on to a couple of things of why things are the way they are with the proposal. Joanne, if you could bring up the page with the proposed site plan? There you go. Now, the reason for the size, you're wondering, you know, kind of why outside of code or what is it, it's twofold. As Andy had referenced, it's, it's a standard size for a reader board. So those are already pre-engineered, pre-made, you can buy them, almost kind of like an off-the-shelf item. It's a standard size, you see, driving up and down a highway, a freeway, just about anywhere. To have something custom engineered and custom-built, you're talking about two or three times the cost. So whereas maybe they could, they're probably looking at about between 1 and 2 million to do this, if they were to do, you know, what Joanne had kind of scoped out, maybe bring it down into, into a more size that's to current code, they would probably be looking more like 4 to 6 million dollars. So it's a huge price difference on the tenants end. And then, as far as the site plan goes, what she had drawn out would work perfect if they could put it on the freeway side of the parking lot. But we can't go further east because of the wash, the ground has to be stable, engineering for the wind load and soil conditions. So as you see on here, the pink and purple, that was the new ADA ramp that was put in. You see the little orange section was the old one, and they purposely made it go around so it could have full clearance from the street and sidewalk, so that there's no overhang of the sign of any kind over any, or what you would call a drip line. There's never going to be any water falling on the sidewalk or the street. So, but to put it in this planter, all the way on the opposite side of the parking lot from the street, to have that standard shape would be the only way to give it freeway visibility. If it were confined to the lesser width, like Joanne had showed, it wouldn't have the freeway visibility. So it was twofold in that point, and then also as a point of reference, the angel sign along the 57 freeway that you mentioned is 230 feet tall. We've worked on it several times, so it's four times the height. It's all perspective and the size of the property and how far you are from the freeway. If you were right on the freeway, something that's 40 to 50 feet tall looks huge, but as you get 20, 40, 60 feet away, it makes a huge difference. And that's why that sight line that he was talking about, the eastbound traffic, was so important. If the bottom of the board was any lower than is being proposed, it would be kind of pointless, because you wouldn't be able to see the bottom of it. So the whole point is for office-type tenants to be able to advertise. So who's going to go in a type of building like this? You're talking about lawyers, doctors, dentists, CPAs, things of that nature are going to use this building. You know, and if you went a couple towns west or on the other side of Palau Hill, you know, there's plenty of opportunities for those people to advertise and take the business away from West Covina. But if you could have those types of businesses in this building, and you could see that they're there from the freeway, that's a great business opportunity for the tenants. So I just wanted to point out a couple of those things that you'll see in cities east and west, even if you're, you know, like you said, Pasadena, Glendale, Burbank. Burbank, you've got giant multi-tenant signs with the faux airplanes on top. You know, Pasadena, you've got Land Rover, Sprouts, and Cadillac, all huge signs right on the freeway. In Glendale, you've got the mid-rise to high-rise buildings all with signs, so when you reference those cities, this is not out of the norm. This is something you'll see in all the cities around, and it's all about competition for business currently. It's, you know, we see it every day, because this is what we do for a living. Every city is going after every tenant they can for the tax revenue, because they want to keep their cities alive and vibrant. The cities that are staying true to the old ways and stuff, I think they're going to hurt. Whereas people who are adaptive and see, hey, the business climate, the world has changed, if we can't attract people to our buildings, our centers, our city, I mean, you can figure what's going to happen. So, I mean, this is the world that we live in, we're very busy, whereas most people probably aren't right now, because everyone is trying to redo what they're doing and have a different way of looking at things and attracting business. And this is exactly the type of thing that you're seeing everywhere. It's about being competitive. It's like, do you want to be competitive for your city and its prospective tenants? Or, you know, do you want to let them go to the next town over? Well, they will let them. So, I mean, everything that's done here is done for a reason. It was well thought out. It wasn't just like, let's put this up at this size in this spot. It was all considered based on engineering, visibility, price, feasibility, and what's best for tenants and business. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, one sec, I do have a question. So in, in terms of perspectives, you had mentioned other cities and other sign, signage?
Yes.
And in terms of buildings? I do want to bring you to a point, though, because some of the cities do have big signs, but they also have building that's a lot taller and a lot bigger as well, just like some of the downtown buildings that we drive by. We do see those signs on top of the buildings and what have you, but they also have a couple of hundreds, or if not thousands of tenants also in that, in those larger buildings. And the sign is, you said it's relative. It's relative to the building, it's relative to the city, it's relative to the overall area, and also the skyline of our city as well. We don't, sometime, I, I mean, I appreciate how, you know, you come up here and you give us your expertise, and you should, you also know this as well.
Yes.
Because with the signage that you worked on, and also with the building that you worked on, I mean, obviously, when you have a huge, huge building, and in, in, in West Covina, we don't have that many big, giant skyscraper type of building. I think we have one along the freeway that is the tallest.
100 South Boranka, and in their instance, they have used their land as much as they possibly can. They could not possibly do something like this, because they have a multi-level subterranean parking garage that abuts right up to their property lines. So that was a personal choice of developer of that building.
But you see, the signage that they had is relative to the building in, in, in true perspective. So I'm, I'm not saying that the signage is not good, I mean, the signage is good, but it also need to be perspective to our, our cities, our skyline, and also to the well-being of everyone in West Covina who are residents, that when they drive by, well, they block their view of, I don't know what view that they're looking at, but we do have mountain views, we do have hillside home, we do have, I don't know, mountain view of the north, mountain view of the south, and we also have South Hills Hills. So, you know, those are, everything that we do have to, as our commissioners, we do need to take that and as a residence into considerations.
I understand, and that's why we kind of showed the perspective photos, too, how it's not blocking anything. And the current NRCC, the Title 24 codes for lighting, applies to sign lighting, and in 2019, it was amended for reader boards, they refer to them as EMCs, electronic message centers, which have to be fully dimmable or auto-dimming. You may recall when these first came out, you know, you may be driving down the freeway at night, and it would be bright, almost, you know, there'd be glare, so, or during the day, you couldn't see it because it was too dim. So now there are new codes instituted that they have to be self-actuating, where it's built into them to, they can dim based on if it's getting dark early, you know? If it's cloudy out and there's less light, if it's bright sunshine, they can dim up to 65% now to avoid glare like that. So this is all, you know, current technology and things that's going on, you know, everywhere around here that people are doing to try to, you know, make their properties better, expand their business, and it's, like I said, everything here has been so well thought out and pre-planned that, you know, we're here for a reason, and we think it's a good one.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So is this sign the same size? Okay, so if I'm going down the 10, if I'm going east and I go through Ballin Park, I think it's Ley Laws, they have a, they have a reader board, is it?
Yes.
Basically the same size?
Would be exactly the same size, because it's standard size. It's right across the street from Ley Laws you're referring to, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, same size.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And anyone else in favor of the project that would like to come up? If not, then those opposed who'd like to come up? Thank you.
I will be the sixth resident that opposes this. Of course, the McIntyre family and the fellow that's going to install it are super energetic about this, but the residents are not. Brick and mortar is hurting, and I, we are all changing in 2020, and we're forced to because of COVID, and I don't know that it will go back in 2021. Everybody's adapted to Zoom, and everybody's adapted to the new way of technology. That building has stood there for many years, and it was empty. So all the interior design is wonderful, but you may not bring people back in there just because it's beautifully decorated. What I am here to oppose is a digital reader board. This is not a board like Ley Laws, this is a digital board. This is completely different, and it's 60 feet tall. If he wants to build a board, he should build it under the restraints of what the current zoning law is. That's what us residents want. We don't want anything oversized. The mall is different. The mall has the major stores, and I, you got, whoever approved that, well, that's, that was then. But this is a smaller location, and it should be considered that way. It should be appropriately sized for that 12 businesses that potentially going in there. Report also states that there'll be no anticipated increase in traffic. I believe that's exactly what the digital board purpose sign is to, increase traffic. It's to, it's the entrance to the freeway, so right there on South Garvey Avenue, that strip mall is a busy one currently, so yes, it's going to increase traffic as well. That's the whole purpose of the huge board, is to bring more traffic in. Although we have the freeway corridor off the 10, let's have some character and taste in what we've had in our city. We don't have to go the digital way. And I would just ask, no exceptions, if they want to put, there's nice signage in the McIntyre Square, it's perfectly fine now. I am opposed any digital, as the other five residents, and there would have been more residents opposing if it wasn't the two days before Thanksgiving. So thank you for your time, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Joanne, do you remember when we, not too long ago, we put up a reader sign at the doctor's hospital? At the doctor's hospital?
Yes.
How big, do you remember how big that sign was? That's a reader board.
Yes, it is, it is a reader board. I'm not sure exactly how large that was. I, I didn't look into it prior to this meeting.
Okay, because I, you know, I had mixed emotions at the time they put it in, but now it just blends right in, and you, you know, you get to see things and all that, and I thought it was a good, good add, you know, add to it, so I'm just wondering, in comparison, size-wise?
At the time, the doctor's, at the time, the, that reader board was, was approved, however, it was, the application that came in for the planning commission to review was a variance. After, after the approval of that particular, shortly after the approval of that particular reader board sign, and also the, the school, Northwestern College across, across the freeway, the, the city adopted a code amendment to allow digital reader boards on, on, on properties adjacent to freeways, so.
Just from my seat, I always, I always look at that building every time I'd go by, and I think, gee, what a nice building. I could never understand why it wasn't filled to capacity. Mr. McIntyre just enlightened me all the things that had wrong with it, and no wonder it wasn't filled to capacity. But it's just a unique building. I mean, I'm a fanatic for brick buildings, but it's, it's just really a nice building. And I think all the money he's putting into it, and it looks, as a matter of fact, he's got flowers around it and on everything else, even that little touch adds nice to it. And it's right on the on-ramp and everything, it's, I think with, with what he's putting into it, I think it'd be filled up, and I think it'd be a value-added.
Adam Chair, you know, he has, he has the opportunity to rebut.
His what?
Were we in discussion now, because he needs to rebut? The applicant has a chance to rebut.
Yeah, I know, I'm just speaking out. Just trying to get some prospect as to what that last sign that we agreed to put in and it's in compared to what this one would be.
Okay, so he asked his questions, and we'll come back and revisit that question. Anyone else opposed, would like to come up? Seeing none, Andy, would you like to come up and rebut, or? Drew?
To try to rebut, this is a unique piece of property where there's nothing else like it in the community, and I promise you, under today's codes and regulations, nothing will ever be built like it again. We're, you know, as you said, we, we want to get this thing fully tennevised, we see the opportunity, that's why we, we did this, and we see the opportunity for, for the whole area. I want to constantly hit back on that because of how bad of an area, the whole area was, and, and this is going to be the final cherry on top, to be able to maximize that area to the best of its current conditions. We don't have a lot of high buildings, like you say, to be able to put signage on the top of them. This is a very important component to be able to attract the highest quality office tenants you possibly could have for that site, and somebody that might be willing to accept them a little bit smaller, because it's not that big of a building, would maybe consider saying, I'm going to go in here, because of their ability to be on that signage. And if there, could anybody bring up some of the? And if there, could anybody bring up some of the, the factors of, of what I might rebut from, I mean, I think, is it Angie, Angie?
Yeah.
Angie, you know, it's a perspective, perspective is perspective. So her perspective is that it's, it's over the top. My perspective is it fits perfectly. It's a matter of taste in that perspective. So I don't know if there's really anything to rebut from a, from a factual standpoint.
I have a question.
Sure.
Angie did bring up, you know, a digital and this is, can, can we talk about the, the technology that's in this board? What, what will it do? I mean, is it, is it just gonna, you know, there are some, if you go down the freeway, you see animation, you see, you know, all kinds of interesting things as you're driving, not just names and things like that. I mean, is this, what is the capability of this board? What's it going to do?
Technically?
Yes.
What's the capability? Not that we're going to be doing this, but we could watch the Super Bowl on this screen. This is the highest quality technologically advanced screen as anybody has anywhere, as far as diodes, LEDs, clarity. This is going to look clear as day, as, as good as any TV that you see anywhere.
So it's like, is it like SoFi Stadium? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, SoFi has a 360 going on inside of it, but.
Ideas, right, Andy?
Technically, the clarity is going to be at that level. And it's just going to reinforce the business-friendly community that West Covina is and the fact that we're on top of what businesses need. This is going to be a complete example of, of, of that to let people know as they're cruising through the 10 freeway, that West Covina is a top-notch technological, business-friendly city. And this, this is going to scream that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm thinking we have everyone who's opposed on rebuttal. So I'm going to close the public hearing and open for commission discussion. Anyone would like to go first?
Sure, I'll go. You know, we talked about with the last project, how this particular area, this corridor has experienced a, a renaissance and a, a rebirth and a regrowth. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the McIntyre properties have been a big part of that. You know, it's, it's funny, you talk about, you know, people that have, that have moved here recently, they don't know the history of these properties. You know, over by my area, people that have moved here in the last several years, they go by the Heights Shopping Center, they don't know the horrible history of that BKK property. They don't know the hell we went through over there for all those years. All they see is a, a nice Target, you know, they see a Home Depot. This is a center that was originally like a B center and it's, you know, it's, it's doing quite well. And, you know, but it's, it's people, not, all they see is what they see now. They don't know the history. They don't know what we went through. And the same thing is true as you go on the 10 freeway with the Eastland Center and, and the square, which used to be Country Club Center. And then, you know, you also brought us the Nissan dealership, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, I remember many years ago, I, I managed the Shoe Pavilion Store, which was next to the old Lucky, you know, before it even became Albertson's, you know? And across the street, there was a rundown strip center, you know, a low-rise with five, with a bar and God knows, and a clothing store, and it was just a disaster. And that's one probably, one reason why the store, you know, was gone in five years because if what was there today was there back in 98, it might be a different story. But, you know, these things have evolved and again, you know, I hate to say what I said before, but we, West Covina lives off of sales tax and property tax. We don't have a manufacturing base, you know? We, we live off sales tax and we live off of property tax. And when you talk about traffic, I think that's kind of a, you got to be careful with that word because traffic doesn't necessarily mean, you know, cars backed up and stuck in it. It means traffic coming to the center. It means traffic getting off the freeway and visiting the centers. And, you know, to me, the, the McIntyre people, the McIntyre family has, one of the things they're known for is developing, building and managing and retaining the property. They don't build it and run and leave it to somebody. We've seen this in other shopping centers in this city where developers come in, my glasses are fogging up with this stupid mask, but when developers come in and they buy a property and they, and then they leave it. And then you see it change hands over and over again, and the property begins to deteriorate because nobody's really keeping an eye on it. See, the McIntyre properties are well-managed, well-maintained and are built to last and built to endure. And, you know, I've got to believe that the same thing is true with this building, you know, as we, we've all said, the building sat there empty. And you know what? I mean, whether or not the building succeeds, whether or not it, it, it fills up or remains empty, that's up to Mr. McIntyre to market it and fill it. That's, you know, if it doesn't happen, nothing out of my pocket. But, you know, I'm, I'm looking to help that building succeed. I'm looking to help draw people into the city, to draw them off the freeway. I mean, eventually we're going to get through this COVID thing, I hope, at some point. And people will, again, and, and Angie's right. I mean, a lot of people are used to this new way of shopping, but you have to kind of adapt and you have to, you know, zig and zag and, and, and make things work. And, you know, people are still going to eat, they're still going to, you know, want to go be entertained and that, that center does that. And, you know, what, what he eventually puts in this building is going to need help to attract people. And, you know, I, and again, I mean, I realize that, you know, we're, we're being asked to approve something we, we don't allow, but at the same time, we're asked to initiate an ordinance that would allow it. So, and there aren't that many subject properties that would be, would fit into that category. So, you know, I mean, I'm not going to change my mind now. I like signs. I like, I like reader board signs. I like signs that attract people to West Covina. And again, you know, we have to take advantage of our, of our logistics and that's one way to do it. So I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
I am totally for businesses and helping businesses. And the McIntyre name and City of West Covina is all bound together. They did great, you know, shopping centers. I understand that. I really appreciate all the shops that we have. However, having a vision and running your business and with the dynamic and changes that is going on, having a big sign that gigantic, which is, you know, not good for the City of West Covina with its skylines and all that, is not going to help bring your businesses to that location. Either, I don't know, the management teams or something needs to work to bring all those businesses in. It doesn't just walk up to you just because you have a big old sign. Another thing is that, for example, City of Industry, they have shopping centers. I mean, City of Industry, they do not have people. West Covina has 140,000 people. You should be able to fill those shopping center easily. City of the Industry, if you walk by those industry shops, you'll be surprised, baking shops packed with lines. I mean, I'm not sure about during the COVID time right now, but obviously everyone is going through a hard time just starting today or tomorrow. The governor, I believe, is closing down again on the restaurants due to the increased numbers that were, you know, people are being infected and, and also with the holidays. I'm not sure how much the travel influence has. But I just wanted to say that I would do anything I can to help all the businesses in West Covina, especially during this time, they're going through a really, really rough patch. But I truly don't believe that a sign that big is just going to, driving along the freeway is just going to grab all the resident, you know, to come over and, and, and join the businesses, what have you. You either have a change of teams, a vision that you need to see, that, that, that dynamic that's happening in West Covina, understand that and work with that to draw in the businesses. I don't know how people do it in the City of Industry. Like I said, I'm very surprised and I'm, it's always packed over there and they don't even have population. I don't know how many City of Industries has, if the last I heard, the count was less than a few hundred or even thousands. But their shopping center is a pack and they don't have those big gigantic signs along the 60 freeway that I see. Along the 60 freeway between City of Industry, which has no people whatsoever. So to me, I really feel strongly that a population with all size and, and, and a beautiful city with, with landscaping, with hillside homes, with all the shops that's coming in right now, you really need to change and look at the dynamic of the businesses as well. If you're developing businesses for, for who? For what type of people? You really need to look at that too. It is changing. I mean, that's what's important, not necessarily a big sign that really can make a community, not only that, you know, the community and the people and the residents that live here have to look at the signs on a daily basis and that is really blocking. And we're all setting a precedent. This was not the only sign that we're going to approve, believe me. There's going to be more coming up and how are we going to deal with that? How are we going to work with all that? Do we approve this one? Do we change the code? Do we make it, you know, is, is, is 640 feet not big enough? 50 feet wide is not big enough? A thousand feet wide turn West Covina into like a Las Vegas community with all the lights blinging on all night long? I don't think that is what West Covina need. We, we really need to think about it as an owner, as a resident, as a, as a planning commissioners, we are a team that we're working together and see this going forward, not just for today, tomorrow, and also, you know, 10, 20, 30 years from now. Once it's approved, it will be there forever. And I understand the building is old. In the old days, you know, it's, it's, whether it's not up to code or it's not kept nicely for all these years, I understand that you bought it, but also at the same time, you really need to work with a team of people that can actually help you. Not, I don't believe that a sign is going to bring in businesses. Really, I truly don't. I think I would do anything to help you, help the businesses and all that stuff and even the restaurants. I love to have those restaurants around after this whole, this whole COVID-19 is over and I still want to shop, I still want to eat and all that stuff. But, but, you know, to me, I don't think a huge sign is going to really, truly is going to help your business in that perspective. I mean, yes, a sign will help. What is coded for, that will do, but not, you know, you think if it's, if it's a thousand foot, you, you think that's going to bring in all the businesses and it's just going to flock over there? So that's just my input on this whole, you know, signage thing. And, and, and I am afraid, not only for today, but also for the future businesses that is going to go on from now. Anyone? Go ahead, Herb.
I just want to make a, a quick comment, two things. One, the chair has stated a couple of times that she doesn't think signs bring in people. I think you need to, I think a lot of these businesses that operate off freeways and put up signs would beg to differ with you. That's why they put those signs up, to bring people in.
If you lived here for 30 years, you would know.
May I finish my comment?
Where things are.
May I finish my comment? Thank you. I also find it ironic, again, that the chair said she'll do anything she can to help businesses here in West Covina, yet she was the only one to vote against a brand-new shopping center to bring in business to West Covina. I find that ironic. Go ahead.
Just to rebut that, Herb, the businesses is fine. The only thing that I'm against is that the two signage that I do not want to set a precedent for.
So you killed the whole shopping center.
No, I did not kill the whole shopping center.
She voted against it. My only point, voted against that new, seven new businesses coming in, you voted no.
Yes, I have something to say. Nothing like turning a 20-minute meeting into two hours. Anyway, I've always been bigger, bigger is better. I, I, when norms came in, they wanted the 30-foot sign, the 30, 40-foot sign, they, everybody complained, they went to 30 feet and, and they only screwed themselves. Jolly Bee, I told Jolly Bee, that was my building, that was my business, I'd want everybody to see it. This, this gentleman here, Mr. Tuck, I told him I thought his sign was too small. If, if it was mine, if it was mine, I want, bigger the better. I'm, I'm, I'm for this and I'm ready to make a motion to approve it.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to second your motion, except I do also want to, you know, continue on what Herb had to say about, you know, the idea that, you know, or, or the contention that signs don't have anything to do with, you know, generating business. That's just, you know, patently absurd. And, and in this case, we're dealing with something that is an altogether new way of putting, you know, the vision of business advertising, you know, out there, you know, in the streets, so to speak, that we should be really eager to want to grasp onto and, and encourage and be at the forefront, be on the cutting edge. Because this is, this is an altogether new thing. This is new technology that can do new things and, and have a different kind of impact that business advertising, you know, hasn't really seen a lot of before. And so why are we pushing back against that? Why are we, you know, you know, are we going to be, have ourselves stuck in the 20th century approach to how we encourage and develop business in our city? I mean, that's insane. So, you know, this is something that, you know, is worth, is worth welcoming. You know, it's, it's something along the lines of, you know, taking that, that risk as, you know, as commissioners to, you know, to bring in these new approaches, just like Mr. McIntyre is taking the risk that the enormous risk he's taking with, you know, trying to, you know, you know, bring in tenants to this property and everything that he's invested to it. You know, to say that you don't believe that the sign's going to have an impact on, on, I, I just don't believe it's going to, you know, bring in, you know, you know, tenants to this, you know, to this property, is really not our concern because that's not the, we're, we're not the ones assuming that the risk of whether it's going to have that effect or not. That's, that's Mr. McIntyre's concern. So for all those reasons, you know, we need to be, you know, open, I believe we need to be open and flexible to this changing environment. And, you know, we're going to probably at some point down the road, and maybe after we're long after this commission, off this commission and another generation of commissioners has to deal with this question of, well, you know, how does the, you know, this evolving technology for business signage, how are we going to address that in terms of its, you know, its size and, 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 and density and placement and so on? How is that going to, you know, how do we deal with that? You know, you know, we're not even there yet. You know, we're, we're on the cusp of something totally new here. And this is where we need to, you know, have an open mind and, and try to, you know, open the door to these new ideas instead of saying, you know, putting our hand up and say, nope, we're going to take a step back towards the 20th century, we're not going to move forward. So that's the reason why we need to, you know, keep a, you know, keep an open mind to new approaches to business and be friendly to business, not, not by taking steps backward.
I look at it a little differently. What, what excites me about it is that it's in a great location for public service announcements, Amber Alert and all that type of thing. The occupants, that's, to me, that's a sidebar, but looking at it from the city and the board and the things that we can put on it, like the applicant said, Valor, Field of Valor, Amber Alert, all those types of things. Amber Alert, all those types of things, people would never know about it unless they would see it on a reader board. So the applicant's going through, the only expense of putting this up, and the city's gonna get a lot of benefit out of it. And that's what I'm looking at.
One more comment, if I may. You know, for many years, this city, we used to have the big banner up over here, West Covina, the most business-friendly city in the San Gabriel Valley. And across Amar, near, you know, on Amar near Azusa and over off of Lindora, we had the banner across the street, West Covina, the most business-friendly city. You know, we have individuals that profess to be business-friendly, and it's not just here, it's on the council, too. They profess to be business-friendly, but they don't vote to support businesses. You know, I mean, you can't be both. You can't be I'm pro-business and then vote against businesses. Doesn't make any sense. I'm for it.
Cause there are motion to
There's a motion and a second.
Actually, we still have something that we need to do, Joanne. There are two, I think there are two items tonight to talk about. One is the approval of the sign.
I'm sorry, what did you ask for?
Oh, no, I think there's another items, there's another.
There's, there'll be two resolution numbers if this, if the items are approved. And just to clarify that the conditional use permit would, is only allowed, the planning commission is only allowed to approve the conditional use permit for what's currently allowed in the code.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read the conditional, the resolution numbers. For the conditional use permit number, resolution number is 20-6055. For the code amendment initiation number, it's 20-6056.
I made the motion. I've got a second.
Wait. You made a motion on both items?
Yes.
I need clarification of exactly what the resolutions are approving in terms of the CUP on the code amendment.
So in terms of the conditional use permit, it would be what's allowed through the CUP, which is a 394 square foot electronic reader board sign, that's 60 feet in height. As far as the code amendment, it's only a code amendment initiation, so it's for the planning commission to initiate a code amendment. So once initiated, staff will bring back a draft code amendment for planning commission review.
Okay. So the conditional use permit is, is, you know, for the approval of the reader board sign area 394 square feet, which is not what the applicant is requesting, correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, we're, Commissioner Kennedy, we're, I think we're, I think we're in agreement that we don't want to move that resolution because that's not what the applicant is seeking and we're in support of what the applicant is seeking, correct? Okay.
If I may, Chair, I think what staff was trying to do was to give the applicant an approval as the code is currently written, which is why the CUP is limited to the 394 square feet. The second action would be to initiate the code amendment, and if that is ultimately adopted, the applicant would come back with a subsequent CUP to get approval for the sign that he ultimately wants to build.
Okay, so the adoption of the resolution for the CUP doesn't deter or eliminate the possibility of the applicant pursuing what they ultimately want because then
That is correct, yes.
The code amendment, if adopted, will allow that process to be available to them.
That is correct, yes.
Got it. Okay.
So it is
Therefore, we, yeah, to continue with the original, yeah, to continue with the original motion and second, then, you know, that does, that's not, that doesn't change then. Okay, understood.
So if I may, Madam Chair, vocal?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So again, to reiterate, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennedy and a second by Commissioner Hockes. And with that, Vice Chair Holtz.
This is for both of the
That is correct, yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
And Chair Hink.
Nay.
The motion passes for one.
Non-hearing items, so 10-day appeal period. Actions taken by the planning commissions are not recommended. The city councils will become final after 10 calendar days unless a written appeal, but the appropriate fee is lodged with the city clerk's office before the close of Business Day on the 10th day. Okay, Commission reports, comments and miscellaneous items.
Well, Madam Chair, I just want to wish all of our, my fellow commissioners and staff and residents a happy Thanksgiving. And I would encourage everyone to have a safe and healthy COVID-free Thanksgiving and do everything we can to remain COVID-free.
Same here. Happy Thanksgivings to all the residents, all the staff, all the commissioners and all of our applicants as well. And then we have Community Development Directors' report forthcoming for December 8.
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The, I think the most important item coming before the commission on the 8th is the new accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The commission may recall that in January, an urgency ordinance was adopted by the city council to allow staff to develop an ordinance. We did send our draft ordinance to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We received comments back from them. Joanne has had a couple of conference calls with state HCD, and we now have all of their comments. We do believe we have an ordinance that fully complies with state law, and we will be bringing that to the planning commission on December 8th for public hearing. If the commission approves that, then it would be forwarded to the city council for city council action. We also have a couple of conditional use permits for a large house, large home room additions, as well as a rooming house at 1212 South California Avenue. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Mark, can you just, what does Jolly Bee wanna do? They have a CUP also.
That is for a drive-through. They are, they're proposing a new location in the Curb Shopping Center, and they're proposing a drive-through.
That way they can look down on it from their offices.
Yes, they can look across Grand Avenue onto the building, correct.
For the ADU discussions on December 8th, did we get it back from the state already?
We did get it back from the state, yes.
Okay, thank you. And city council action?
There aren't any council actions relative to actions or recommendations that the planning commission has made recently. So from that standpoint, I don't believe I have anything to add.
Thanks, Mark. Is any further business discussed? If not, then this meeting is adjourned at 9:23. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We made it by curfew. Fantastic.